Meeting to order, please rise. And Trustee Navarro, would you listen to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Don't worry about that. Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Sure. Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Present.
Trustee DeCosta.
Present.
Trustee Navarro.
Present.
Clerk Reyes is here. Supervisor Wilt.
Here.
That's everybody.
We have a forum, so we can proceed. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the July 8th board meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 8th, 2025.
I have a motion in a second. I have motion by Trustee DeCosta, seconded by Trustee Navarro, to approve the minutes of July 8th, 2025. Are there any additions, corrections, anything that we need to adjust here? Hearing nothing? Then, all in favor of approval of these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Next, we have, under new business, we have our community partnerships. And the first one to consider is People Care. You would step up, identify yourself, and just give us a synopsis.
Good evening, I'm Judy Mantle. I'm the executive director of People Care. I was going to say still, but it's a good thing, so I won't complain about that. As you know, we are the most sought-after provider of transportation within Riverside Township. We serve Riverside North, Riverside Brookfield Lions, and a very small portion of LaGrange Park. It's basically the RB District border line in LaGrange Park is where we service. We are booming with new clients. We're averaging right now, not quite two clients per week, but one point...
Added?
Pardon me?
Added, you mean?
Added new clients per week, yes. And the interesting part of that this year is the clients are stemming from Riverside and Brookfield. Last year's influx of new clients was North Riverside, this year it's Riverside and Brookfield. I can't account for the demographics like that and why it happens, it's just the way that it's happening. Last year, we did have a very small percentage that were outside of the township boundaries by a half a mile or a little bit less. This year, we went from 18, we're down to 10 that are within that half mile of the Riverside boundaries. Unfortunately, it is because those people had passed away. That is the sad nature of our business, of working solely with senior citizens. And I want to thank the board, because as I was preparing my information and my statistics, we have a new category in our assisted rides platform that allows me to track phone calls coming in and phone calls going out. Last several years, I was woefully underestimating how many we actually have. To date, so far this year, we have 2,940 phone calls, which, that's a lot, that, you know, it's, I'm like, I don't, I didn't think we were doing that many, but it's recording them as they come in, so obviously, we are. Our latest club, The Bounders and Geasers, we've seen an increase of 18% of participation. That's a men's only club, that meets at Cantata once a week on Tuesday afternoons, and it's for men only. So I did crash it a couple times, so I could take pictures and videos for social media, but otherwise, it is our men's only. And it's run by Bruce Jablonski, who used to be the director of People Care. It's a really nice group of men that get together and they talk about whatever they talk about. Bruce does set a few guidelines, like no politics, no religion, and then sometimes no sports, because it gets a little, it gets a little divided, but overall, it's a really popular program. This year, just in the last two weeks, everything was finalized. We have a new public service that we are offering to all of our clients, and it is the importance of selecting, communicating, and documenting a health care power of attorney. It's a really scary thought when I myself worked with several clients that did not have a health care power of attorney, and they went into the hospital, and it was a scramble to find a family member to call that would take the call and make these decisions for them. So we have partnered with the missions integrations, mission system integration over at Loyola Hospital, to offer this as a public service for our clients. We are not saying, pick this person, do this, do that, or anything like that. We're not affiliated with the Illinois Department of Public Health, we're offering this as a service. The missions system integration over at Loyola has two people that are certified trainers that can lead discussions with people one-on-one and ask the very important questions to help them make a good decision for their health care power of attorney. They also have the Illinois Department of Public Health's standard Illinois power of attorney for health care forms that they can utilize if they would like, or they can contact their own lawyers and such, but typically, they don't have lawyers that they can contact. So this is a new service that we are going to be offering, and it's going to be in our next newsletter. We've had them sit down with two of our clients already, and they had the hard discussion of who to ask.
So what is your role in that? Is it the promotion of it? Is it getting the people to the appointment?
Our role is letting the 300 and odd, 350-some clients of People Care know that this service is available to them. There's people that are not People Care employees or volunteers that will come in and speak with you free of charge to help you make this kind of decision, because it's a very important decision for all of us to have. And they will give them the form, the people would fill it out with them. You don't actually have to have a, not notary.
Yeah, notary. You're probably talking about a notary.
Right, but you don't have to have...
An attorney?
No.
Witnesses?
Witness, thank you. You don't have to have that, but that is on the form.
It's usually better.
And most of the time, they'll have a neighbor or best friend with them to do that. We have sat down with three different clients to do this so far, and I know their names, who they sat down with, but I don't know what the outcome of it was, because that's between them and the other people. It's just a public service that we have found is very much needed in the community and for elderly people, because we're finding more and more of our seniors don't have family members in the immediate area or within 50 miles. So it makes it a little bit difficult for them when they're in the hospital. And they actually have told the hospital, oh, we'll call Judy from People Care, and I'm like, well, Judy can't. Judy can come and hold your hand, but Judy can't do anything else besides that. It's a tough position for them to be in, but I'm happy that we're able to have that out there for them. The only other thing, I mean, you know who we service, it's all senior citizens, 95, 97% is actually within the township, so it's all township done. We did get a new grant this year from the SCP Foundation, which is a foundation of gamers. I know, I was a little surprised myself. And it's, they kind of keep it like, you know, they're the Knights Templar, they're kind of a secret society. This check came, and I actually had to call the person who recommended us to it to say, what is this?
Yeah.
And so he let me in on that. So I was very happy to get them on board, and they seem like they're going to partner with us for several years to come. I just wanted to share three little things about People Care. We did not plan this, I had nothing to do with it, but we got it in the landmark, that is our Dear Birdie and the Fourth of July Parade, and it just symbolizes exactly what we do. We now have a waiting list of seniors who want to participate and be on our float in the Fourth of July Parade. So, and right now, we can accommodate six seniors safely on the float with two seniors in the car. If we can come up with another trailer, we will accommodate more seniors as that comes. And then, I got two notes in the mail. One from a North Riverside resident, she says, hi Judy, can't thank you enough and your entire organization for all you do. Your cards, your incredibly kind drivers, and all the conversations, et cetera, et cetera. I loved participating in the Riverside Parade, and the Christmas function was so thoughtful. Thanks again for helping with, helping me with all the transportation needs. And this is from a lady in Riverside. Dear Judy and all, our neighborhood is so fortunate to have People Care to look out for their citizens, and now, 35 years later, it's a wonderful milestone for you. Thank you for all you do, and thank you to People Care. These are, this is what we get. It's very real, it's very important, and it's really part of not only my heart and my board's heart, but all of our volunteers. So does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your service, for the services you provide. How do you get your information out to our communities?
We have our quarterly newsletter, which is out. I just actually have an ad in the last week's landmark. We put our newsletters in the township halls, and also in North Riverside Public Library, Brookfield's Public Library. No, Riverside, it's not in their library, because it's right out here. And it's basically, it's word of mouth.
Okay.
And I know...
We refer a lot to you.
Yes.
Right, I...
Well, Brookfield Police Officer Golden, she's the one that handles more of the senior calls and such, she refers all of them to us. And I'm wondering if that's why we're seeing a little bit of an uptick with the Brookfields?
Could be.
I'm not sure.
Also, once you get one local, they tell each other.
Yes.
Right, so with that being said, with the police department, do the other police departments in the communities that you serve, do they have a senior liaison like that as well?
I don't know if Riverside has a particular person.
Yes, they do. Riverside definitely has one.
Riverside does? Does North Riverside, anybody know?
Not that I'm aware of.
No. We've always worked with Officer, I think it was Sergeant, actually, Dan Morello from Riverside Police. He's now retired from them, but he's still...
But there's another officer that took his position.
I can't remember the name.
Yeah, I know, yeah. It escapes me at the moment, but yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
So, I've always communicated with everything through Dan Morello.
Okay.
And I still do, because that's just the way it works.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else I can answer?
Other questions? Then what is your pleasure?
Any other?
We have one more question.
Thanks for, thanks for all you do, it's amazing.
You're welcome.
You do amazing work, and it's, I don't, it's a real benefit to the township and to the community, it's amazing.
Yeah, we love our seniors, we really do. And we're actually increasing having an extra social this year, so we can get more people out and about and to it, because it's, sometimes it's limited of how many we can transport.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions? If not, then what is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the grant for People Care in the amount of $14,000.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee DeCosta, to approve a $14,000 community partnership with People Care. Any other discussion?
Thanks for everything you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for always being so supportive of us.
We have to take a vote first. Will the clerk please, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now you can thank us.
Thank you again.
All right. Thank you. And then, the next partnership request is from North Riverside Parks and Recreation.
So first thing I want to do is I want to introduce myself. My name's Jack Savage, I'm the director of Parks and Recreation for the Village of North Riverside. I have had the privilege of, you know, getting to know Vera very well, she's been at our, you know, our senior, our senior fairs, our Fourth of July Parade, you know, so it's a very nice ticket to meet all of you as well. The reason I'm here is because of our 2025 Autumn Fest, which is coming up on Friday, September 12th, and we are looking for a grant to help with our Kids Zone, because we have a lot of activities that we wish to pursue, you know, and, you know, some of those activities are, we're going to have an illuminated, you know, mini golf, we're going to have foam X throwing, we want to have face painters, we want to have tattoo artists, and all those types of things. Really kind of take the special event to, you know, another level with a Kids Zone, and actually, you know, give kids more to do. It already had, you know, a chili cook-off, which has obviously been a tradition for the past, you know, 15, 20 years as well, but we do want to add programs for, you know, for the kids. And, you know, it's just an area to, you know, have fun, be entertained, you know, and it is an outing that has between two, you know, 2,000 and 2,500 people come from all over the area, you know, we're going to have the Blues Brothers play, you know, at the concert that night too as well. I mean, we're obviously going to have adult, you know, adult stuff, and, you know, beer trucks and stuff like that, where, you know, we're going to take care of that kind of stuff, but we're looking for the assistance for all the kids' stuff, to be, you know, a positive place for the kids to hang out, be on the village grounds, and we know that we draw a lot of people from not only North Riverside, Riverside, Brookfield, for, you know, for that evening, so. I know, I know Brian Rulo came last year, because I started about two weeks after this event last year, so unfortunately, I didn't get to see it, but I've done a lot of research on it, and it looks like it's a very popular program within the community, and we're getting calls left and right about, you know, who's playing, what are you going to have at the event, what are you going to do with this? So we really want to go ahead to be able to, you know, give the community, you know, a great place to be, obviously, on September 12th, and with the event running from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. So, does anyone have any questions?
Are you going to have fireworks this year?
Our plan is to have fireworks, yes.
Okay. It's early this year.
What's that?
It's early.
The event is...
Yeah, you know what, we had to move it up, because RB's homecoming is on September 19th. So we moved it up, and we've got another event called Opportunity Knox, for like the special needs softball and stuff like that, that's September 26th, so we couldn't move it back, so we did, we ended up moving it up this year, just to accommodate, you know, all the, all the programs that we do have, you know, so, because we didn't want to say no to anybody, you know, and obviously, the special needs is out there, they got the entire park for two weekends, not two weekends, two full days. RB's got a strong following, obviously, as you guys know, and this was our option to move it to September 12th, so.
I think Labor Day being so early also has thrown a lot of calendars off.
A hundred percent, a hundred, I mean, September 1st.
Right.
I mean, it's literally September 1st, so...
It's as early as it could possibly be.
I was looking at that with, you know, we were tying it into, you know, the Bears are playing Monday night, so it's not that, you know, and all that kind of stuff, so there's a whole bunch of stuff that we were looking at when we were putting this program together, but September 12th, yeah, it does seem early, but it's always very well-attended.
I have a question about your face painter and tattoo artist.
Yeah.
Is this a new person?
This is going to be someone that they've used in the past, it's not the same person that we used before.
I'm thinking that we didn't pay for this before, because that's a big, I mean, that's, is she Rembrandt? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, that is really, I mean, we have gone through this and looked at pricing and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And actually, we actually get in a little bit of a discount, because they're tying it, they're tying it into the tattoo artist too as well. So, it's, it's all combined. I think for the, I think for the Fourth of July, it's about $1,000, so it gets to be expensive with that kind of stuff, and it happens to be a little bit longer, so our program, they did it for two hours for the fourth, they're doing it for two and a half hours, all the way up to the fireworks here, so it's a little bit longer.
Okay.
It's just kind of how they do it, and if I could take a side job, I'm, maybe, maybe that's what I'll do, you know, so.
I'm sorry, Trustee Clark, did you have a question? I think I jumped in there.
I think previously, we've always just paid for the face painters and not a tattoo.
Maybe, maybe that's it.
And I think that's probably what the difference is in price, and...
It's just that one took me back.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's definitely, and we have priced everything out, and we're not trying to take advantage of anything, believe me, as far as, you know, itemize the stuff out, so it's, I mean...
I was approached, I want to tell the board, I was approached as to whether our partnerships are limited to one shot per, like, a village, or if, if we granted something like this, if we would still consider if there were a fire, or police, or, you know, a different department? And I said, typically, we haven't cut it off, you know, we haven't treated it as one government unit, but rather as different portions, you know, different projects. I think I spoke correctly for the township in that.
Sure.
And we participated, we always, Trustee Highlandbach always makes his award-winning chili.
Chili's one of my favorite things on the planet, so the spicier the better.
So if we do this, then there's got a slight edge coming to that.
I mean, I mean, we're in Cook County, so, you know, vote early and vote often, so...
Little finger on the scale here?
Yeah, I mean, just give it to me, and I'll just put it in, you know, I'll just put it in the box at the end, how about that? But yeah, no, it's, it's an exciting thing, you know, and I think we've already got people turning in, you know, you know, entries for the chilies and stuff like that, because people look forward to it, you know, so it's...
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I am noticing it's about an $1,800 more request than last year.
Yeah.
Because you're wanting us to pay for more, obviously.
We're actually, yeah, because we're trying to increase our Kids Zone, to be honest, like I was saying, you know, with our illuminated mini golf, it's going to be like, you know, like a nine-hole course, you know, so it's going to be actual, a bigger layout for us on the front, on the front, people actually in the back, I'm sorry, of the, of the Village Commons, so we're actually increasing the area of what we want to do for these kids, so the other thing, another thing that I failed to mention is, we're actually going to have Ski Ball out there, so, and that's a really, you know, and that's a really fun game, you know, obviously for kids and stuff like that, and that does cost a little bit. So we're trying to do different things, I would say, you know, instead of just the every day, let's get a, you know, let's get an inflatable, let's go down a, let's go down a slide, let's actually have something a little bit more interactive and have fun.
And I'm assuming you have other sponsors for this event?
Absolutely, 100%, yeah. We're getting sponsors every day, we've just got a, you know, a sponsorship from the mall, we're getting a sponsorship from, from the bank and stuff like that, so we're really trying to, you know, really get out there and, you know, and utilize as many things as we can. We don't want to ask you guys to sponsor like our beer, you know, and stuff like that.
So do those sponsors, are they sponsoring something specific, is how you're asking us, or is it just a general sponsorship?
It's a general sponsorship. It's a general sponsorship.
And what type of recognition is given to sponsors?
Sponsors, we put in the brochures, we give, you know, we'll have, like, we'll have a page out, we'll do thank you letters, we'll do all those types, you know, certain types of things. I will also talk on the mic and stuff like that, I will, I will recognize organizations at the, at the actual event, you know, we can get a banner made with, you know, with the sponsors and stuff like that, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do. The last thing that I want is to take advantage of any sponsor, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, they feel like they're being recognized, you know, and I don't care if you're giving, you know, I told, I told people like this, you know, I just, you know, I went into Jersey Mikes, and I'm like, if you give, you know, if you give me $150, you know, I'm going to value that as much as whatever, so, you know, it's going to a good cause, like, it's going to the community, and it's a huge community event, so, you know, I want, I want to make everybody feel important for, you know, given their hard-earned dollars or their sponsorship dollars, however.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the Village of North Riverside has been very good to the township in general. We do our Health and Wellness Fair at North Riverside, no cost, and a mental health board. All you have to do is call up Mayor Mangone, he is always, always, whatever the township needs is what he tells me all the time, you guys got whatever you need. They involve us in their activities.
Yep.
Which is nice to see and nice to have, so that's just my two cents on it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll echo that, I mean, when I asked about the Fourth of July Parade, only, I mean, you jumped on board like 10 seconds.
Yeah.
I mean, it was the same, the same thing at the senior fair, when they, you know, set up a table, you know, we were, I mean, we had a great turnout for that, you know, and I think it was very valuable for you guys to be out there for that, so, you know, again, it's, I see it, I see it as a partnership, I see it as like a reciprocity, you know, you guys need something, or, you know, you know, more than, more than willing to help, you know, and stuff like that, so it's not just, you know, like you said, Mayor Mangone's phenomenal, that kind of stuff is, he's got a greater relationship with, I believe, all you guys, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to grant the North Riverside Parks and Recs $4,810 for Autumn Fest.
Awesome.
And the checks are made out to the vendors.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to approve a $4,810 partnership with the Village of North Riverside Parks and Recreation Department for the Autumn Fest. Any questions or a discussion before we call the motion? Then Clerk Reyes, would you please call the motion?
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta.
Yes.
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. There's some extra, the rest of your flyers, or do you want us to put these out here? Jack, you want these, us to put them out? We can put them out on the table.
That'd be awesome.
Great, we'll do that.
Thank you so much.
You too. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the, the request for special use for Sunday, September 14th, and this is for a party that would include alcohol, which is why it's before our board. I don't think anybody's here to speak to it.
I, it's under, yeah. I make a motion that we...
I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah, I, I'll go back, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I, you can go ahead, I skipped on the agenda.
Okay. I make a motion that we grant this rental request to them, as long as they have the proper insurance.
Very good, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Navarro, to approve the special use request for Sunday, September 14th, so long as they provide the appropriate insurance. Any discussion?
Just real quick, it's a six-hour event?
They usually...
That includes setup and, say, I know there was an issue with one of our rentals a while ago with...
Were they going too long?
Right.
Yeah, now, this would probably, they know that they have to be out by a certain time, so they are, they wrote that it's ending at 9:00, so that they can clean up and get out of here by 10:00, I'm sure.
Just caught me off with the six-hour timeframe.
Right, no, I mean, we, we work within that, for example, we had a party a couple of weeks ago, and they wanted to set up on Friday, we charged them for an extra rental for setting up on Friday to be here on Sunday, so...
Sure, okay.
All right, no further discussion?
Is there a number of hours that they can rent, or...
Yes, and offhand, I can't tell you what that is, it's, I mean, it's, it's a reasonable number, but it depends on the party, we're kind of flexible, because there's usually a higher fee, there's extra deposits if they're, if they're, you know, setting up and using alcohol and such, so, yeah, I mean, if they need overtime, but it's usually from roughly, we allow it the better part of the day, it's, they can go up to like 12 hours. Okay. Any further discussion? Not then, do I have a motion to approve it?
I think I would just say that motion and...
You made a motion, we have a motion already?
Second.
Okay, then please call the motion.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach?
Yes.
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes, motion is carried. Okay, that is approved. And sorry, backing up to item B, which I so valiantly jumped over, and that is the, the chili cook-off that was, that we're already sponsoring, but for our participation to compete. So I'm asking this board, do we have volunteers to prepare a chili for competition?
Sure.
Good. Our tried and true, and we're gonna get that prize. All right, um, then, I don't think we really, there's no cost involved here. Um, I think that the approval of this board, we don't really need anything fancy, but, uh, calling your attention to the date, and we can certainly, even if we have a cook, we can use help with distributing chili. Very good.
You won't be there?
She will.
No, mine will be there.
Oh, that's a check.
We'll probably be there.
Was there last year.
All right, um, then we'll move on to communications, are there any communications?
Uh, we, we had some communications to, to myself and to some of the others, elected officials from Illinois Comptroller, Susanna Mendoza, congratulating, uh, myself and some of the others in the election. Uh, so it was, it was a nice little note that she sent on, I think, to, to all of us. That was the only correspondence that we received.
Okay, thank you. Then we are on to, uh, reports, supervisor's report. It was a pretty busy month, so bear with me. Uh, vouchers for the farmer's market are getting used by roughly half of the recipients so far. Some save them for a higher-cost purchase such as meat, so it's too early to predict what the utilization will be. But as of today, we've distributed three hundred and eighty vouchers at five dollars each, and as of last week, I have redeemed one hundred and thirty-one vouchers to the vendors. That included fourteen from prior years. Uh, two of them showed up from twenty twenty-three. But I'm not gonna deny them to the, uh, to the vendors, the, the reimbursement. They, they took them and the, they legitimately look the same as they have. Um, just a reminder to the community that are, that only people participating in the food pantry receive them, and so far, that means a total payout of six hundred and fifty-five dollars to date. We'll change the color on them next year, maybe, uh, we could more easily spot old ones, but if we change the color, we can ask the vendors to only accept current vouchers, but, you know, I'm sure that we'll still honor some older ones. Right now, they've looked the same for at least three years, and it's probably been a little longer. Uh, for the record, seventy-six households have utilized the pantry in twenty twenty-five. There has been some money movement in the past month, a general assistance, uh, CD matured in July, and the renewal rates were lower than what we're earning in the money market accounts, so the CD funds were rolled into that money market instead in around mid-July. There was a separate savings account opened when we received the bond funds for the bridge project, or when we got the bond approved. So, um, since, but since then, the, the funds were used to pay all the contractors and the savings account was being charged fees that now exceeded the interest earned. So I've moved some general funds into that account from the money market, it's earning the very same rate as the money market, so, um, you know, we have the, the max rate, uh, funds on all of, all of our deposits there. So, um, just so when you see the financials, that's what happened there, that's why there's no, no longer a CD and why there's some movement among the accounts. I attended the July quarterly meeting of the supervisors of Cook County, there were a number of new supervisors, so we had a good turnout. I've completed my term as treasurer of that organization, so I also met with two of the new officers to change the signers on the organization's bank account. I highly encourage all the board members to participate in their divisions to get acquainted with your counterparts and other townships and acquire some new ideas. Um, the wall repair in the auditorium was completed, I'm waiting for a callback from a company that does the kind of dental plaster work that is needed near the, uh, the ceiling in, especially in one spot, the same place that had the other water damage. But if the wall looks pretty good until we get that dental work fixed, it'll, it'll suffice for now. Um, we're working on the water invasion by the front entrance, I don't think there was anything yet tonight, but when there's a very hard rain, as we've experienced several times this season, the gutters from the roof can't take the water off enough, so it pours down over that, um, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Uh, I'm sorry? Thank you. I, I would call it the portico, but yeah, scupper bucket is fine, and then although there's a drain on that, uh, the water can't drain fast enough and the water starts coming through to the, to the lobby, to the entrance. So, we're working on expanding that drainage and then probably waterproofing that so it won't seep through, but project by project, we're doing the best we can. Um, any recommendations you have, um, for assistance with that would be welcome. I have asked for an updated estimate to put in a service window to replace our makeshift counter. The one I have is nearly a year old, uh, it's within, we don't, at the price of this, we won't have to go out for bids, it's a, it's a reasonable price, and I think the design, it would, would mirror what the village has kind of thing, and it would go into those windows. So I, I don't have it yet, but I'm sure the prices have changed somewhat on supplies since last year. So I'm getting that, and then I'd like to get that rolling if we can. Um, the clock specialist finally came out this week and gave us an estimate for repairs, over eight and a half thousand dollars. Um, that would be the first major refurbishment of it. We've had it serviced in between, but it'd be the first ones in over twenty years, so, yes.
Does it include repainting the numbers?
Well, no, that, this would be the mechanism, and then I talked to them about that, and they're gonna refer me to somebody that does the exterior, the, the numbers, it would, I do want to do that. We do have the promise of the family, uh, the Jisas are relatives of the family that originally, uh, established that clock, and they have offered to help pay for the, for anything that we do on it, to bring it up to snuff, so we're working on that. Just as an aside, I did a major downsize last year, and I happened to be at the old house, which I still own, uh, this weekend, and I found a scrap of paper caught in one of the shrubs, and when I pulled it out, it was like, uh, I don't know, it was a little bit creepy, but it is the story of when it was last refurbished in nineteen ninety-eight, and my husband was supervisor. So I thought that, I mean, that is just weird, of all the pieces of paper that could get stuck, the weekend before the clock repairman comes, it's like, okay, Gary, I'm working on it. He's, he's haunting me, okay, I'll get it fixed. So, anyway, um, I don't know, I mean, we know this clock repair company, they've done the work on it over the years. Um, I think it's probably for, for the small number of technicians that know this kind of work, is probably the best way to go because he already knows the clock. Um, he's an elderly guy who comes out with his son, and, you know, they, they were both crawling up there this week, so we need a taller ladder because that last jump is pretty high. So, anyway, uh, so we're working on getting the clock re-refurbished, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll refresh the outside. It also is gonna need new mortar around the outside, so these are two different projects, though, the mechanics and the cosmetics, so. Um, then, five of us, um, attended the sesquicentennial soiree on the, um, complimentary tickets that we received for sponsoring the band. Um, the orchestra actually was, as was already mentioned here, was very good. Um, a clerk was also present, so there were, there was a good representation from the township. Um, I mentioned a bit of envy when I complimented the committee because our, you know, our own hundred and fiftieth was washed away by COVID, so we weren't able to celebrate. And in, in sending out a note to the, uh, co-chairs of the sesquicent- sesquicentennial events, um, they basically said that they would like to recognize the township's simultaneous hundred and fifty-fifth anniversary and are, are gonna work on something to, to do with that, at least some kind of a publicity about that. So, one hand washes the other, and I appreciate, uh, their recognizing that. The ad, if you, I have not yet received it, but if you receive the special edition of Delaplane magazine with the sesquicentennial that we approved an ad for, you will not find our ad. They inadvertently did not publish it, so we're getting a refund. They offered to give us advertising in the, the rest of the issues for this year. I don't see a point in that advertising, we're not a business to make money, so we'll take the money back, and duly note that, uh, they messed up. Um, finally, I did spend some time with the secretary for the Riverside Township Mental Health Board to help acclimate her to an Apple computer after her laptop was hacked and she replaced it with an Apple. Um, I got her through the process of finding her old files, creating distribution lists, and getting her minutes from the June meeting completed, um, and how she has resigned for health reasons, but she got those completed, and I feel good about having helped her get comfortable with that. But, um, I want to note, I know the mental he- health board will certainly acknowledge it, but she had been taking the minutes and filed her documents and such for thirty-nine years, so I thank Joan Labeck for her many years of service. Um, and that's all I have, unless you have some questions, if you haven't heard enough from me.
Um, supervisor Wilt, um, for the vouchers, why don't we put the year on it?
It is on there, the year is on it, but it's small, and it's, you know, the vendors are taking it like cash, they're taking it, uh, and they don't look at it that carefully, you know, there's, we, it's a business card voucher, and there's only so much print you can put on it. So, but we have already planned, we're gonna put it in a different color. Right now, there's a big red band on it, that'll be, I don't know, it'll be green or blue or some other color, so that it'll be distinctive. Uh, you know, we put those out at some point. I'm amazed that some people actually held on to vouchers for two years before they used them, you know, maybe they were cleaning like I, I was and, and found, oh gee, I should, see if I can use these, you know. Anyway, it's not that big in the whole scheme of things, if we can help people who are struggling, so be it. Any other questions? If not, then thank you, I will call on the assessor for her report.
Good evening, I'm Fran Setkowitz, here to provide you with, um, an update on what's happening at the assessor's office. Um, so last week wrapped up our final session, session, appeal session with the Cook County Board of Review for twenty twenty-five, and we helped about two hundred and thirty-five taxpayers, um, work through appeals. Uh, some of them filed appeals, some did not. Um, we saw about eighty-four people in our office just for appeals. We also were very actively busy with, um, exemption applications. The Cook County Assessor's Office remained open to receive more exemptions because of the delay in the tax bills, so we were filing a lot, many more exemptions than usual at this time of year, so we were pretty busy up there. Um, we still have no definitive word on those second installments, uh, Cook County's not committing to any date for us, so we're just guessing. And, um, and that's about it for, for us. Any questions? Questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, trustees, um, trustee Navarro, I'll put you on the spot first, do you have anything to report?
No, no report, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, trustee DeCosta?
Thank you, supervisor, no report.
Thank you. Um, trustee Clark?
Thank you, supervisor. Um, I would just like to say the exercise class is still going well. It is, our attendance is down a little bit, by about twenty to thirty people, uh, from the month of July, but I do think that's because a lot of people are on vacation in a way, um, for that. Um, let's see, um, the Person of the Year Dinner, the Lions Club Person of the Year Dinner is Wednesday, September seventeenth, and Aberdeen, uh, Ozinga is the Person of the Year, and, um, we do not have a ticket price yet for this, but it will be between, well, I, I won't say.
At the golf club?
But I can let you know as soon as, I, I will have that ticket price next week.
Okay, and that'll be at the golf club?
It will be at the golf club, yes.
What was the date again, I'm sorry?
Wednesday, September seventeenth.
Is there a golf, a round of golf?
No, it's just, it's just a dinner.
Okay.
Didn't we used to have a round of golf?
They did, yeah.
Long time in Miami.
Well, yeah. They don't do that anymore. Um, and, um, the TAC, um, the TAC is, uh, the trustee part of the TAC division is under reorganizing, reorganizing right now, so we should have some more information at a later date with, uh, trustee meetings.
Good, very good. Thank you. Any questions for trustee Clark? Thank you, then trustee Hylandbach?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, the Mental Health Board is off July and August, so I have no report, but I do have a couple of things. First, I want to echo what the supervisor Wilt said about Joan Labeck. Um, this is, she is real good at what she did. Um, we never had problems with the auditors or anything like that, those minutes were impeccable. Uh, she is going to be very missed. Uh, I've got a call into her, uh, and I'm hoping that you reach back out tomorrow, uh, so I can make sure that she's okay. The other thing is, is that, uh, as I mentioned, our Health and Wellness Fair is going to be August thirtieth, from ten to twelve, at North Riverside Commons. Um, we have over twenty-five vendors, uh, this year, and it is very informative. Um, if you had a chance, please stop by, we will have some door prizes again this year, so, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for trustee Hylandbach? Hearing none, then we will move on.
What day, September?
Sunday, Sep- August thirtieth.
No, Saturday, August thirtieth.
Isn't that Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Oh, it's Saturday?
Yep.
Thirty-first, thirty-one days.
It is Labor Day weekend, but.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving right along, um, just for, for your information, we have some information on TAC events. Uh, there's a township symposium, and, uh, you have all the information there. Let us know if, if you, um, need us to register you for anything so forth. And then registration is open, as a matter of fact, they've already passed their early bird discount for the Township Officials of Illinois meeting in November, uh, tenth through the twelfth in Springfield, and I'm sure that trustee Clark can tell you more if you have any questions about what it's like. She's been a, a very regular and, uh, involved trustee at that, uh, at that event. And those are the only reminders I've got there. Does anybody else have anything, just FYI to share?
Just on the TOI official event, the theme this year is Back to Basics, because they had a lot of turnovers as, for trustees and supervisors.
Lots of new people, absolutely.
Um, so, but even though many of us, you know, have been trustees, there's still always a lot to learn there.
There is.
Great networking opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
And the, um, uh, president's reception or something is gonna be at the Lincoln, um, Museum.
That's a nice.
This year, and they'll be bussing us there.
Very nice. Okay, thank you. Please take note, check the, uh, the magazine for more information, they write up a lot about it there. And then we are up to the approval of warrants.
Make a motion that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, August twenty twenty-five, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents, as presented to the board this twelfth day of August twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
No, second.
I have a motion by trustee DeCosta, seconded by trustee Hylandbach, to approve the general warrants for August twenty twenty-five in the total amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. Are there any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, then clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee DeCosta?
Yes.
Trustee Navarro?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hylandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes, motion is carried.
And I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, August twenty twenty-five. Utility warrant, August twenty twenty-five, the amount of one thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and four cents. Payroll warrant, nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, sixty-eight cents. Health warrant, three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars, forty-eight cents. General assistance warrant, fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars, eighty-nine cents. Food pantry warrant, one thousand, forty-nine dollars, ninety cents. All of the above as presented to the board this twelfth day of August twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee DeCostela, seconded by trustee Navarro, to approve the following warrants for August twenty twenty-five. Utility warrant in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and four cents. The payroll warrant in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. The health warrant in the amount of three thousand, four hundred, I'm sorry, three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. The general assistance warrant in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Food pantry warrant in the amount of one thousand, forty-nine dollars and ninety cents. You've heard these warrants, you've, um, and we have a motion and a second, are there, is there any discussion before we take a vote? Any questions? Hearing none, clerk Reyes, would you please call the roll?
Trustee DeCostela.
Yes.
Trustee Navarro.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you. And that, um, that concludes the warrants, please make note of, uh, the financial reports that come with that, and are there any public comments? Anyone want to speak? Hearing nothing, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Navarro, to adjourn this meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much.